We'll call this regular monthly board meeting for May together and we'll have the prayer by Superintendent Voci and Mr. Nokosia, will you give some pledge today?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for another productive and successful school year. As we wind down this week, we ask your blessings upon our students and staff as we dismiss for the summer. We are grateful for their hard work this school year and we ask that you reward those efforts with the restful summer. Please keep them safe as they travel and enjoy their time off and return them to us safely in August. Thank you, Father, for our staff who went above and beyond in meeting their obligations to the children. We are certainly blessed with outstanding, caring educators and supportive staff and for that, we are grateful for your grace. These things we pray in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent Voci, would you call the roll, please?
This is Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mr. England.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Mrs. Daisart.
Here.
Dr. Craft.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
We welcome our attorney, Mr. Gerald, good to have you with us. We'll have a point of personal privilege by Ms. Daisart at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. On behalf of the board, we just want to wish our fellow board member, Mr. Campbell, a very happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And let's just send the board members.
Item four on the agenda is recognition of receipt of the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Board Officials, awards for excellent in financing, financial reporting. Here's a financial guru here, Mr. David Fernandez, come on and take a bow. You and the department, that's great. What year is this that we've been receiving these awards, which is unique for school systems around the nation?
Twenty-one. See, I think it's twenty-one.
So that's, that's very...
So, oh, back, you can't win that one.
Yeah. That's very great.
Somewhere in that area.
Yeah, we appreciate the department and you for leading the way in these awards and we hope you will continue to keep up the good job.
We're gonna do our best, Dr. Craft. It is a team effort, though, it's the entire business department, the administration, superintendent, everybody contributes to the financial statements.
Yeah, you know, team means together everyone achieves more, so you must have a great team. So that's, that's very good. So, thank you very much and applaud you for your, for your work.
Thank you.
Superintendent Voci, because she's got that background in finance.
And I know, it seems like every year, we say the same things and we tend to gloss over it a little bit because it's so normal, I guess, to us to receive this. But I think it's just very, very important that the general public know how well our finances are being handled and that each and every year...
Here. That each and every year, as we receive this award for financial reporting, that not all local governmental bodies and entities receive this. With the hundreds of millions of dollars that have passed through the school system in the last few years, especially with all the FEMA monies and, and the disaster recovery monies, as well as all of our federal and state and local funds, I think it's, it's a tribute to Mr. Fernandez and his entire staff, which is a very small staff, that they have done such an excellent job that not only do we receive this recognition from GFOA and ASBO, I think more importantly, each year when the audit is done, that we receive an unqualified opinion, a clean audit, and absolutely no adjusting entries, which in governmental accounting sometimes is very unheard of. So we congratulate, you know, David and his entire group for the magnificent job that they do. And we just seem to take it for granted every year that we receive this again, but it is an outstanding achievement and we're thankful that we have such dedicated, competent people working for us in our finance and business departments.
Small group.
Yes, small group.
Applause. Thank you very much. We go to item five on the agenda, public hearing on 2015-2016 general fund and special revenue funds budget. Does anyone want to speak on this or have any questions relative to that? Mr. Fernandez would be most happy to respond to that if we have any questions from anyone in the audience or anyone from the board as far as that's concerned. Here, here are none. We will move the agenda. Do we have anyone sign up for community concerns?
No, sir, we do not.
Ms. Shelby? Okay. Okay, we're moving right along there. Item seven, motion to incorporate the May 12th, 2015 general committee report into the minutes of May regular monthly meeting. Motion by Dr. Lewis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warner. Any, any questions relative to this? Okay, we'll take a vote. Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
A motion to approve the following minutes, and we'll take them one at a time for a vote. Minutes of regular monthly meeting of January the 27th, 2015 is published on May the 15th, 2015.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Daisart, second by Mr. Campbell. Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Minutes of the special meeting of February the 10th, 2015 is published on May the 22nd, 2015. Any questions here? We have a motion by Ms. Acevedo, second by Mr. Campbell. Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Minutes of the regular monthly meeting of February the 10th, 2015 is published on May the 22nd, 2015. Motion by Mr. Nokosia, second by Dr. Lewis. Any questions, any statements? Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Minutes of the special meeting of March the 10th, 2015 is published in May, on May the 22nd, 2015. We have a motion, Ms. Lemoine.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daisart. Okay, questions or comments? Here are none, vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
The minutes of the regular monthly meeting of March the 24th, 2015 is published on May the 22nd, 2015. Motion, Mr. England, second by Mr. Warner. Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Okay, item nine on the agenda is a motion to approve the guide to student conduct for the 2015-2016 school year, and there was a recommendation by the committee when we surveyed this. Any questions on the student guide to conduct? Mr. Egan?
I just want to make the motion.
Okay, you want to make a motion, you have a second. Second by Ms. Lemoine. Okay, all in favor, are opposed, vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Okay, we have in your folder, personnel changes for May, and that's designated item ten.
For informational purposes, you can see those marked in yellow, or the changes since the committee meeting. We talked about, well, this is the time of the year, toward the end of the year. We had talked about Dr. Gonzalez, who is retiring June 30th, and how sorely she will be missed, and what a great job that she has done. We also have three other retirees, and well, really four when you count Jack Serenay, that we also talked about at the committee meeting, with what an excellent job he has done in his forty-plus years at Shellman High School as well. Jackie Porter, who is our special education coordinator, who is second in command to Sharamie Kirth, is retiring after, I think it's thirty-seven years with us in special education. And then we have Cindy Guerra, who is a teacher, a special education teacher at Smith Elementary, who is retiring after a very long career as well. And then Patricia Lausa, the instructional coach at Shellman Elementary School, again. I think we're at the time where we have so many of our more experienced people with thirty-five, between thirty-five and forty years, retiring. So we want to wish all of them well. They've done a tremendous job with us, each and every person on here, and they're going to be sorely missed.
Thank you, Superintendent Voci. Mr. Long?
Ms. Voci, talking about experience, how the assistant principal at Shellman, how many years does he have?
Well, we're gonna get to that in a second. You're talking about the appointments that are, that'll be coming next?
They'll be coming next, okay.
Yeah, so I just wanted to see if you had any questions on these, because all this is for informational purposes.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else? Okay, this does not require a vote, we just received the personnel changes there for information purposes. We'll go to item eleven, 2015-2016 personnel appointments.
Okay, what you have in front of you, and again, for informational purposes, is a very thick list of what Mr. Granberry has put together of what he sees as appointments for this coming school year as it stands at the moment. Now, there are a few appointments, as you well know, we've been advertising for positions over the past two weeks, and I wanted to highlight the appointments that have been made and incorporated into this list. So first of all, with the retirement of Dr. Gonzalez, our new supervisor of transportation will be Ms. Julie Gennart. Julie has been with us for twenty-eight years in our school system. She was a teacher and assistant principal at St. Bernard High, and she moved over to Nova before the storm as its principal, and is currently the principal at Raleigh Alternative School. I think Julie is going to do an excellent job. She does a great job with whatever position that she has held within the school system. So Julie Gennart will be our new supervisor of transportation. So congratulations to Ms. Gennart. Then secondly, as you know, Jackie Porter is on our minutes as retiring, as the, well, coordinator of special education. And after interviews that were held, our new coordinator of special education will be Mrs. Allison Grove. Allison has been with us for thirteen years, as a, started as a special education teacher. She taught at Davies, she taught at Andrew Jackson, and she became a reading coach for us, and worked very hard in curriculum development, especially with special education. Then was a data specialist, and most recently, an instructional facilitator for the district focusing on English language arts in our elementary program. So with her special education background, as well as her curriculum background, I think she's going to be an excellent choice as our new special education coordinator. So congratulations to her as well. The third appointment tonight is a supervisor of special programs. And this is going to be a combination of our federal and state grants, a lot to do with compliance and licensing, and will oversee all of those compliance measures for our federal and state grants. And we are happy to say that tonight, we will be appointing Debbie Seibert for that position. Ms. Seibert has been with us twenty-five years. She started out as a teacher at Millodon and at Davies. She was the head start coordinator for our school district, was the assistant principal of our preschool programs, and most currently has served as the principal of all of our preschool programs, coordinating head start, the LA4 program, the HE funding, and the tobacco settlement Title I funds, all pertaining to that particular program. So she has extensive experience in licensing compliance, and I think she's going to be a really good fit for that position. So we'd like to congratulate Ms. Seibert. The new Merrill Elementary School that will be opening in two years, we did interviews for the assistant principal, and we're happy tonight to announce the appointment of Heather Morrell as the new assistant principal for Merrill Elementary. She's going to be based at our largest elementary school, Lacoste, in training at that point, so that when the new school is open, she will be able to move into that assistant principalship. She has been a teacher and educator for eleven years. She started off teaching at Shellman Elementary School, and she is currently the instructional coach at Goche Elementary and does an excellent job. She does a lot of the professional development for the teachers, and she's very highly respected within our teaching corps as a leader in curriculum. So we're excited to have Ms. Morrell in that position. At Shellman High School, with the retirement of Mr. Serenay, the appointment, this is going to be Jason Dewey. Mr. Dewey has been with us for eight years. He started as a special education teacher and has worked within the entire high school program as an instructional facilitator, working with students with disabilities, with the assistive technology, a lot of the discipline issues for our special education students. So he is currently based at the high school and has a great deal of experience in that realm. So our new assistant principal at Shellman High School is Mr. Jason Dewey. Then the position that we had, we had talked about for a communications slash curriculum support person, who will handle all of the district-wide communications, the website development, the public relations, the business and community interactions, as well as being part of her time in the curriculum development, will be Alex LePray. She has been with us for five years. She has been an English language arts teacher and is currently the instructional coach at Shellman High School. And prior to coming to us, had worked as speech writing and, and different political campaigns and such, where she comes from, another part of the country, not in this particular area. So she has extensive experience, parts of experience in that realm, the communications realm. So I think she's going to be a really good fit for that position. And then lastly, the instructional coach at Smith Elementary School, that opening developed when Cassandra Reddick was named the assistant principal. So we advertised for that position. Interviews were conducted by the principal and two other interviewers, the principal, the assistant principal, and one of our supervisors. The choice of that team, interview team, is Michelle O'Neil. Ms. O'Neil is, has been a teacher for eight years with us, most recently at Goche Elementary School. She has done a lot of curriculum writing, curriculum development, been involved in that throughout the elementary program, and she was chosen by, you know, Ms. Bailey and her team as the next instructional coach at Smith Elementary School. So these seven appointments, you'll see in that large list of appointments, but I wanted to point them out to you because we've been very busy these last two weeks, or the last week or so, conducting the interviews for the openings that we have had. Okay? We'd like to congratulate all of these people.
Thank you.
We're very blessed to have such talented people within our school system.
We need to create additional openings.
Yes, now that's gonna create additional openings for which we will be advertising, probably put out advertisements tomorrow to fill the positions of some of these who had been administrators in their prior positions.
Since you're all coming from within, that's gonna leave some vacancies to be filled.
Yes, circles down, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's all right. We wish them all the best in their new role as leaders, so I'm quite sure they'll work with the overall team to give, give us good results. Anyone else has anything to say? Here are none, well, we don't need a motion on, on that. We go to number twelve, motion to approve 2015-2016 personnel evaluation plan. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So move.
Mr. Long made a motion, we have a second. Ms. Daisart, okay, second. Any questions relative to this personnel evaluation plan? That was covered by the committee and got the nod for our recommendation. Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Item thirteen, motion to approve the request for permission to mail letters of assurance.
So move.
Okay, Ms. Dr. Lewis and Mr. Nokosia, second. Any questions relative to the information on mailing letters of assurance? This is a routine we do every year for the, for the employees. Okay, here are no questions. Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Item fourteen, on the agenda, motion to approve administrator's request to renew flood insurance, and there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion, second by Mr. Warner, I mean, made a motion by Mr. Warner, second by Mr. Campbell. We got it in the right order now. Any questions relative to flood? Okay, let's vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Okay, item fifteen, motion to approve the 2015-2016 request to renew, no, that's what I said, motion to approve the 2015-16 general fund and special revenues funds budget. We covered that at the committee meeting. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Daisart, second by Ms. Acevedo. Any questions relative to the budget? Mr. Fernandez is waiting in the wings to give any information that you might desire. Here are none, vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Item sixteen, adopt the 2015 millage rates, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Any questions or statements? Okay, we will take a roll call vote on this, and would you call the roll, Superintendent, I mean, Voci?
Do we need a motion?
Huh?
Dr. Craft, if we could, just a discussion on it. The millage would be, remain the same. We discussed it at the committee meeting, but I think it's important that taxpayers know that all the millages remain the same.
Okay, who made the motion? Did we get a motion on it?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Dr. Lewis? Second by Mr. Warner? Okay, any, any additional information desired by the school board at this time? All right, you got anything to say, Mr. Fernandez? We, we covered, he covered it all. He covered it all, so vote your machines.
Well, we, roll call vote.
Oh, roll call vote.
Mrs. Acevedo.
Yay.
Mr. Campbell.
Four.
Mr. Egan.
Yay.
Mr. England.
Four.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Four.
Mrs. Daisart.
Four.
Dr. Craft.
Four.
Dr. Lewis.
Four.
Mr. Long.
Four.
Mr. Nokosia.
Four.
Mr. Warner.
Four.
Okay, thank you much. We'll move to item seventeen, motion to approve the bid tabulation for spices and seasonings, cereal, dried beans and crackers, frozen foods, meat and meat products, poultry and eggs, seafood products, and canned goods. And for the period of July the first, 2015, through December the 31st, 2015, there was a recommendation by the committee, motion by Ms. Daisart, second by Ms. Acevedo. Any questions? Ms. Bloom, she's here, ready to answer any questions you might have. Since she did such a good job at the committee meeting, I believe no one's gonna ask her any questions. Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Item eighteen, on the agenda, motion to approve the bid tabulation for milk and milk products for July the first, 2015, through June the 30th, 2015. There was a recommendation by the committee, motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Nokosia. Any questions on the milk and milk products? Vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
Item nineteen, motion to approve the bid tabulations for bread and bread products for July the first, 2015, through June the 30th, 2015, and there was a recommendation by the committee. So a motion by Ms. Lemoine, second by Mr. Long. Any questions relative to this? Here are none, vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven zero.
All right, if you have items to be placed on the agenda of the next committee meeting, you may do so now, or you may wait and do it later. Do we have anything, Ms. Daisart, you?
I just have a point of privilege, if I could.
Certainly, you've got the point of personal privilege.
We were all at the graduation last week, and Shellman High School's graduation, and I just, it was just phenomenal that so many of our students earned scholarships. And the total amount earned by Shellman High School students was 7.5 million and worth of scholarships, and that's just a phenomenal feat. Congratulations to all those students, the parents, and also the staff of Shellman High School and the administration for working with our students in order to earn that many scholarships. And there were eighteen, oh, well, we had the students come at the last committee meeting, but there was, there was eighteen students that earned over a thirty on ACT. I want to ask Ms. Lamatta how many students actually earned at least a twenty or over. I think the percentages were in the forty-something percentile of some type of a top, that they earned some, some form of TOPs, correct, Ms. Lamatta?
Yes.
It was over half.
Forty-four percent earned some type of TOPs, with thirty-six earning a TOPs tech, and I think a hundred and thirty-something earning TOPs. And we still have the accommodated ACT scores that have not come in from the last test we took. Students who tested the first testing day, we have their scores. Some tested a second day. We ran all the scores in, so it could be a lie. Forty-four percent earned some type of TOPs.
Yeah, we'll probably get a bump in the increase.
That's a significant number of total students earning TOPs. So again, congratulations to all those students and the faculty and staff and administration for assisting our students in high academic achievement levels and a lot of money to go to college.
Absolutely. Takes a premier school district to achieve this, and we're really proud of our staff and everyone involved and the students. We applaud them because it takes a lot of work to score as well as they've done and get the number of scholarships and also receive the TOPs, TOPs tuition waiver. So, great job, another, another successful year down. Anyone else have anything to say? All right, thank you, Ms. Daisart. Superintendent's recommendation?
We're closing out, I think, another successful school year. Last week of classes, I know everyone is very happy about that. The high school students are completing exams tomorrow. The kindergarten, fifth and eighth grade exit recognition ceremonies are also spread throughout the day tomorrow. The high school students are completing exams tomorrow. The kindergarten, 5th and 8th grade exit recognition ceremonies are also spread throughout the day tomorrow. Thursday will be the last day of classes for all students, and then Friday, teachers will come back for their closing day. And then we start our summer programs on Monday and Tuesday of next week, so it just, it really doesn't stop for us.
Continuous process.
But we have most of, you know, the, the large part of the school year completing on Friday, and we'll, we'll begin summer activities, and then, not only for the students, but also for the faculty in terms of professional development opportunities and workshops that we have all summer long.
Thank you, Superintendent Bocey, and thank you, board members, for being here. Have a great night. We need a motion to adjourn, though. Okay, we have a second. Oh, Ms. Aceveda, we're adjourned if you vote, vote by voice, all in favor. Any opposed? All right, now we do stand adjourn.